Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of May 8th, 2018 is now called to order. The time is 5:59 PM. At this time, we request that all electronic devices be turned off or placed in silent mode. We also ask that you please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. Jane Cuckell is ill and will not be joining us this evening. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student reaches his or her highest personal potential, and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Prior to the start of this evening's board meeting, we have been enjoying the Lee High Seniors High School Center for the Arts Theater Department under the direction of Janelle Laus as they perform song selections from their musical Ain't Misbehavin'. The performers are Jana Glover, Ty Anthony Scott, Michaela Davis, Eunice Jean-Louie, and William Glover. These students are all senior performing arts majors at Lee High Senior High School Center for the Arts. The musical was originally performed in November at the school's Black Box Theater. The show was judged and selected as one of eight shows in the state of Florida to perform at the State Thesbian Festival in Tampa in March. At this time, the Lee High Senior High School Center for the Arts Theater Department will perform one more song. I think you have to agree that they're awesome, and I believe that your group had 200 people in the cast from Lee High Senior, is that correct? Oh, a different one. Oh, okay. Anyway, I saw the high school musical awards last night, and I saw this group performed, well, not this group, but students performed from high schools around the district. And I gotta say, it was really, the talent in this district, the musical talent, the dance, the staging, everything is just awesome. So I encourage those of you who haven't been to a high school musical to be certain to look on your calendars next year and see when the high schools are performing in your area and try to get, try to attend, because I think you'll find it a real treat. So thank you very much. At this time, we'll take a brief pause so we can clear the performance area. Where did they go? Oh, you may leave if you'd like.
Ready to stay?
Or you can stay. Want to stay? Okay. This evening's student representative is Autumn Rhodes, a seventh grader in the Talented Gifted Program at Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School. She is the incoming vice president of the school's chapter of Junior Thespians for the 2018-19 school year. And I imagine we may see you in the future in front, right? Or onstage in one of the schools. She is involved in peer mediation, National Junior Honor Society, Drama Club, cross-country, the Eagle Show Choir, the City of Palms Youth Choir, and Thespians, just recently playing the lead of Tracy Turnblad in the spring musical of Hairspray Junior. Amber has served on the school district's Science Textbook Committee and the school board's Student Advisory Committee. She is learning to fly and loves it. Amber is currently a Cadet Senior Master Sergeant with Charlotte Composite Squadron 051 Civil Air Patrol and serves as a Cadet Flight Sergeant and Safety NCO. She has been involved in Girl Scouts for eight years and served on the National GIRL Media Team for the October 2017 Girl Scout Convention. Amber is a member of the Experimental Aircraft Association and the Mars Generation and founder of the No Bare Feet Project, which collects new and gently-used shoes for families in need in our community. She was the middle school division winner in both sixth and seventh grade at the Thomas Alva Edison Regional Inventors Fair for the years 2017 and 18, the first back-to-back winner. The two-time recipient of the James and Eleanor Newton Scholarship from the Thomas Alva Edison Regional Inventors Fair for 2017 and 18, and is currently a semifinalist in the Jack Cook Kent Young Scholars Program search. Amber's future goals are to get her pilot's license on her 16th birthday, acceptance into the U.S. Air Force Academy to study aeronautical, astronautical engineering, to serve in the United States Air Force, hopefully as a test or fighter pilot, and her long-term goal is to pilot Orion or other future missions to Mars with NASA or a private space company, and she's only in seventh grade. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, four recognitions, one acknowledgement, public comment, consent action items, which include three resolutions, one item under executive services, three items under academic services, four items under human resources, one item under information systems, as well as three items under operations, and two superintendent's recommendations, one of which is good cause. Dr. Atkins, would you please provide an explanation for this item?
So let me get to it. The good cause item, which unfortunately I don't have right here in front of me. I apologize. Just one second. So I've got a different agenda. Thank you. All right, this particular agenda item, we did talk to you about earlier. It's involving the Environmental Protection Agency in school buses, and this is an opportunity that we have, one of only six districts that were selected, to bring forward a rebate and to garner this discount for our buses. Because of the nature of the rebate, we have to get this item approved to move this forward to be able to get this item underway and accepted. So I had to bring in good cause to make sure that we got board approval before we could move forward in a timely manner. And I apologize for that.
Thank you. As presiding officer, I find there is good cause to add this item to the agenda. And there are two attorney's recommendations, both of which are good cause. Mr. Martin, would you please provide an explanation for these two items?
Yes, Ms. Morgan, board members. Both items concern a response to an Office of Inspector General referral to the school district. In that referral, the inspector general requests a response within 30 days, so that's why I'm asking that this item be on the agenda this evening to receive direction from the board as to each complaint.
Thank you very much, Mr. Martin. And as presiding officer, I find there is good cause to add these two items to the agenda. And there are four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Mrs. Fisher, seconded by Mr. Toiber. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Mrs. Giovinelli will deliver the invocation, after which Mr. Toiber will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please rise for the invocation.
Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. I impart supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may be successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the cadet presenting the colors for tonight's Pledge of Allegiance will be introduced by Lieutenant Colonel John Blyler, the senior army instructor at Estero High School. Lieutenant Colonel Blyler retired from the Army in September of 2013 after 26 years of service and started working as a JROTC instructor in August of 2014. Colonel?
Thank you, Mr. Toiber. The national colors for our Pledge of Allegiance tonight are presented by Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Abigail Stubblefield, Battalion Commander for the Estero JROTC program. Abigail is an outstanding representative of our program, having been highly involved in all of the teams and activities affiliated with the Estero JROTC program, and she was the driving force behind Estero entering a team in this year's Cyber Patriot competition. She is enrolled in the academically rigorous Cambridge program and maintains a weighted GPA of 4.25. She has big plans for the battalion next year, including re-energizing our involvement in community service. Abigail plans to pursue paramedic training upon graduation next year. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to ask Lee Hughes, Program Administrator, Title I Intervention Programs, to please join me at the lectern.
Did you want to tell me something?
Yeah, he's up in Tallahassee at the State History Fair. Couldn't be here tonight. Anyone award. Thank you.
The 63rd Annual State Science and Engineering Fair of Florida was held in Lakeland on March 27th through the 29th, 2018. Of the 28 students from southwest Florida that participated, three students from the school district of Lee County received high honors. And we're going to ask the following students to please come forward, as well as their school representatives. Please stay up here for a group picture, and if the audience would please, hold your applause to the end. In the third-place category award, the student is not with us tonight because he's in Tallahassee getting an award at the history fair, but Michael Chirbini, eighth-grade student at Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle, Junior Division, Behavioral and Social Sciences category. His project is titled False Facts or True Truths. And we really appreciate Michael's activities and efforts in his schooling. In second-place category award, Pavon Patel, eighth-grade student at Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle, Junior Division, Chemistry category. His project is titled Does Varying Electric Potential Affect the Rate of Production of Hydrogen? And then... And then in first place, Dahlia Dry, 11th-grade student at Fort Myers High School, Senior Division, Mathematics and Computational Sciences category. Her project is titled Challenging Limitations Using Deep Learning, Time Series Analysis, and Statistical Methods for Noise Reduction to Develop an Innovative Approach to Exoplanet Candidate Detection Using Earth-Based Telescopes. The board members and superintendent are pleased to recognize and congratulate these students for representing the school district of Lee County so well in this state competition. Please line up in front of the board for a photo. Thank you, Lee. The Florida High School Thespians All-State Festival for Drama Students was held March 14th through 17th, 2018 in Tampa. A large delegation of approximately 127 high school thespians from seven Lee County high schools attended and earned all-state recognition and awards in various areas to include large-group musical, small-group musical, ensemble acting, duet musical, costume construction, one-act plays, publicity design, pantomime, scene-writing, monologues, choreography, playwriting, improvisation, and more. As I call out the school, would everyone from the school please come forward to have a group picture taken? Cypress Lake High School. Estero High School. Oh, oh, sorry. I forgot. I did this last time, too. Estero, wait a minute, please. Sorry. Sorry. Fort Myers High School. Ida S. Baker High School. Lee High Senior High School. Mariner High School. And North Fort Myers High School.
I would like to invite the following individuals from Cape Coral High School to join me at the lectern. Principal Jeff Spiro and student Mary Brady. From North Fort Myers High School, Principal Debbie Diggs, student Adriana Machia. From Estero High School, Principal Mr. Clayton Simmons, and student Jonathan Marchetti. From Cypress Lake High School, Principal Angela Rolls, and student Estrella Ramos. You can stand right there, and I'm going to read my part. Yep, so they know what this is about. I'm going to give you... The Sunshine State Scholars Recognition Program for high school students began in 1997 to recognize excellence in mathematics and science. It has since evolved into a program designed to recognize Florida's top high school science, technology, engineering, and math STEM students, and recruit them to pursue their post-secondary education in, excuse me, in Florida. Throughout September and October each year, each school district selects their top STEM 11th-grade students based on established criteria. Recently, the Lee County School District was pleased to announce that Cape Coral High School student Mary Brady and North Fort Myers High School student Adriana Machia are this year's Lee County Sunshine State Scholars. Jonathan Marchetti of Cape Coral High School and Estrella Ramos of Cypress Lake High School were named as this year's alternates. The school board and superintendent are pleased to recognize Mary and Adriana as this year's Lee County Sunshine State Scholars, and Jonathan and Estrella as this year's alternate. We are proud of the accomplishments of these students and wish them the best in all of their future endeavors. But wait a minute. Wait a minute.
I'm not sure... Did Angela Matas make it here? I know she was... Oh, come on down. Come on down. I'd like to invite Angela Matas, a teacher at South Fort Myers High School and Region 6 HOSA advisor, to please join me. I'm going to give you the certificates. HOSA Future Health Professionals, formerly known as Health Occupation Students of America, is an international student organization whose mission is to promote career opportunities in healthcare and to enhance the delivery of quality healthcare to all people. HOSA provides a unique program of leadership development, motivation, and recognition exclusively for middle, secondary, post-secondary collegiate students enrolled in health science education programs. At a recent state competition, Astero, Fort Myers, Ida S. Baker, and South Fort Myers had multiple winners in the secondary division, as well as Cape Coral Technical and Fort Myers Technical College in the post-secondary division. All the medal winners will be representing the state of Florida in the HOSA International Leadership Conference, which will be held in Dallas, Texas this June. The board members and superintendent are pleased to recognize and congratulate the following gold, silver, and bronze medal winners. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Matas to call the students forward to be recognized. Please hold your applause until all students have been announced. Principal advisors, please come up with your students.
All right. A little bit about HOSA. There is over 3,000 attendees at the state conference, and these students compete in anywhere... There's 54 different competitive events, and they may have just a test, just a skills, a test and skills, or something similar to that. But all these students have competed against numerous people and have done our region well. I'm going to start with the first-place winners in medical assisting from South Fort Myers High School, Rhonda Yorick. And the team from Fort Myers High School competing in creative problem solving, first place Bradley Mel, Parker Anderson, Sean Chondry, and Ethan Lung. All right. The next place that took first place in a very unique event called Courtesy Corps, in which students can volunteer to help the state conference run. The state winner is... For first place is from South Fort Myers High School, doing an astounding 29 hours of service during the conference, and that's Jaclyn Espinoza. Up next, from Cape Coral Technical College, first place in pathophysiology, Joshua Stevens. All right. Moving on to our second-place winners. The first one couldn't be here with us tonight, but it's Nathan Jerez from Ida S. Baker High School, placing second place in medical spelling. The next student also cannot be here this evening because she's finishing up her CNA certification this evening. That's Michaela Whitman from Astero High School, placing second place in home health aid. Next, I have a team from South Fort Myers High School competing in medical reserve corps, and that's the team of Aubrey Donahue, Emma Daly, and Alexis Wadding, placing second place in MRC partnership. Also in second place, from Fort Myers Technical College, Dreshe Brown, in Exeter Perineus Health Postern. All right. And our third-place winners. This one is for medical assisting from South Fort Myers High School, Kalen Julmius. And in third place in medical spelling, from Cape Coral Technical College, Tina Knight. Congratulations, guys.
At this time, we'll take a brief recess, so those who wish to leave may do so.
His sister is like a nine-year-old, but he was like...
Gentlemen, I think we're ready to resume the meeting. Okay, everybody come on up to the front. And Autumn Rhodes, I neglected to give you the opportunity to speak to all of those students while they were here, and I do apologize, but if you would please read the character word for the month, I would appreciate it.
So the character word for the month of May is patience, and the definition of patience is the ability to wait calmly without complaining. Here's a quote by David G. Allen that describes patience. So patience is the calm acceptance that things can happen in a different order than the one that you have in mind. And the design that you see displayed on the screen was created by Adam White, a 12th grade student at Paul Lawrence Seminole High School, that showcases patience.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Martin, would you please address the agenda item of public comment?
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted that to me before the meeting began, you'll be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the school board this evening, the school board chair, Ms. Morgan, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment to the school board are posted at the back of the room. The board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers or may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. Speakers are expected to act in a respectful manner. Those who fail to do so after being warned by the meeting chair may be required to leave the meeting. Disruptive attacks on individuals are prohibited. Ms. Morgan, I have eight cards this evening.
Is there anybody on the right side of the auditorium who wishes to address the board that did not fill out a blue card? Is there anybody on the left side of the auditorium? Please state your name. Mr. Armstrong, we offer the opportunity to those who may be unfamiliar with the public comment process to raise their hands and provide their names. The blue card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. Since you did not complete a blue public comment card, would you please proceed to Mrs. Johnson on your left after completing your comments, so that we will have a written record? Thank you. Would you please call the first card? Mr. Martin?
Jerry Ware. Good evening to Mrs. Morgan, our chair, to all of our council members and our board members, to the superintendent, and to Mr. Martin, most of all, to our representative. Good evening. I come before you because, first of all, I want to congratulate the 234 Lee County teachers for being named high-impact teachers by the Florida Department of Education. A recent analysis of former students' performance on statewide assessment found that these teachers' impact on student growth is among the most positive in the state. This attests to the position that I further expressed today, that among our employees we have some of the greatest and the brightest. I am so proud that I can name Jared Eady as one of those high-impact performers, not only in school but also in our community. I am so proud of the opportunity that I have been afforded to not only watch Jared and his trajectory, to be able to work alone beside him as we advocate in our community. I was also allowed to be a member of the selection committee for the position of Executive Director for Diversity. Truly, I remain objective... Subjective in my recommendation of Jared for this position. Let us not be guilty of what happened to this district years ago when we lost Silver Knight, a superintendent now in the state of Pennsylvania. I strongly encourage you, the board and the superintendent, to appoint Jared Eady to this position, and I agree to continue my walk with him as we advocate for our children of this district. Thank you so much.
Louis Navara?
Good evening, Superintendent Atkins and board. Lou Navara, retired teacher from Lee School District, substitute teacher, 40-year resident of Lee County, born and raised in Sarasota, USF undergraduate degree, education, FSU master's degree, ed administration. I'm still a certified teacher till 2022. Let's do a role play today. I'll be the teacher and you guys be the students tonight, okay? How many of you read the 19-page report that I distributed through one of the board members here on the teacher shortage? Raise your hands. Very good. Okay, well, let's talk about the teacher shortage and the sales tax you want to increase for schools. There is currently a teacher shortage. I understand that you're planning to hire 400 to 500 teachers if you can find them next year. All over, there is unrest and strikes in education. I think the teachers and personnel have been pushed to the limit. Now, why do we have to build more schools, rebuild football fields, astroturf, and tracks with special polyurethane with a sales tax when we will not be able to staff new schools? This tax is a regressive tax, but read... Yeah. This tax is a regressive tax and hurts the working Lee Countyans, minorities, and elderly. You say the tourists will help pay the tax, but read the news press today about declining tourists. Also, your $64 increase in sales taxes on itemized deductions. Most of this group do not itemize, okay? And I guess you paid $65 for these flyers for 500. I guess that was a good deal on my taxpayers' dollars. I guess I won't complain. Let's talk about Sarasota. You like to compare them. They have a 1% property tax, but it goes to teacher salaries and benefits and personnel, not buildings. Even Mr. Toyber made a campaign pledge, no new taxes, when he ran four years ago. The sales tax is the wrong thing at the wrong time. He purported actually a bond issue, it says here, or a public-private partnership to circumvent the need for cash. I think that was a good idea, Mr. Toyber. Class dismissed. Thank you very much.
Granum?
There's a news press if they want to read it, but I want it back.
My name is Becky Ganem, and I am a parent of three children that go to Lee County Schools. And recently, my daughter is going to be attending high school, and we did the whole selection process for naming our five different schools that we have to rate, Astero being our number one, and obviously, within our zone, we went on and numbered the rest. We actually just... Actually, I, because I'm a single parent, just purchased a home three miles from Astero High School in December. My child is now being bused all the way supposedly to South Fort Myers High School. I work in downtown Naples. I have three kids. All three kids are going to be going to three different schools: Pine Woods Elementary, Three Oaks Middle, and now, South. I work downtown Naples. I have to drive on some nights, could be an hour and a half, home. I have to pick up my kids at their separate locations. They all... They all play after-school sports because we are highly involved. I have coached my daughter's little league softball team. We are very involved. I've lived here for 13 years. We are quality community members. I'm not just sending my kids to school and riding the skirt tails. My child that's going to be attending high school, National Junior Honor Society, she will be awarded this Friday the President's Honor Award because she has had a grade point average of, sorry, 3.5 to 4.0. Obviously, she's a community member in the school because you had to be nominated as well. I am insanely frustrated to the nth degree because we purchased a home within three miles of Estero High School, and now I, for some strange reason, have to file a hardship letter. I have to file a hardship letter to prove that I have a legitimate hardship to go to a school that's in three miles from where I live. The other school is nine miles. My main question that just blows my mind. Elementary school and middle school have proximity zones. Within a two-mile radius, you have first proximity, and then it goes from there and there's sibling, I can't remember the word, sibling. Thank you. So, why does high school not have the same proximity zones? Why? No high school has this. And it, I got insanely lucky, and you know what? And I'm mad, and I'm so mad at myself because clearly it's taken me, taken it this long to affect me and my family to the point...
Thank you, Ms. Ganem. Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you. Raimi Hall?
Today, I attended your workshop. I loved walking in and hearing a discussion on meeting this, meeting students' needs. As a parent, I love knowing conversations like that are happening in this district. I would encourage the board to not be shy about discussing the impact of high-stakes testing in regards to meeting students' needs, and keep in mind that a poor test should not define a student. Today, across our district, many students took the FSA. Many will be placed incorrectly based on the outcome of this poor test. Our students must be defined by more than the FSA. I would like to see guidance counselors focused on meeting students' needs by collaborating between elementary, middle, and high schools. This is something I've brought to your attention before. It frankly does not exist. There is no communication between our school levels and this district. Safety. We have to take preventative measures to make our schools safe. When my daughter's school recently received a bomb threat over the weekend, the administration worked nonstop over the weekend to deal with it. Administrators are educators. They are not detectives. They are not policemen. You are putting too much pressure on your staff. By making schools safer and taking preventative measures, you will make your administrators' jobs much easier. Safety concerns have to be addressed by this district. In closing, I would like to remind you that you are all examples to our community. Students, parents, staff, look up to you. The way you treat each other and talk to each other resonates through our community. What I witnessed today in the workshop was frankly concerning. I would have been embarrassed if my children were there. The way one board member addressed another one was rude and out of line. To speak poorly of former, of former staff in this district is unprofessional and rude. Anytime an employee leads a job, there's a reason. It's by choice or force, and they always have a story. I would encourage you to take the high road. What I saw today was definitely not the high road. In regard to the OIG complaint, I know nothing about this investigation, but I would ask the board to let them investigate. What do you have to hide? You know there's concerns with Benita. You've heard it time and time again. Just to mention school choice, the mom that just spoke, school choice is broken. You guys know it. You won't address it. You've heard it over and over again. It is a broken system. It needs to be addressed. You've got time. Address school choice over the summer. As a real estate agent, very difficult to sell houses and put kids in public schools because they're always full. Thank you, guys, for serving our district. I know you love the children and do the right thing. Take the high road.
Charla Fox?
Board, Charla Fox, thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak with you. I just wanted to continue my support and the support of many teachers that I talk with, with the half-cent sales tax. I know that it feels like a regressive tax, and it is considered because sales tax are, but when we think about it, we need to understand that it's on $100, we're talking 50 cents. We're talking the realities. What's going on in our district in growth, many people still really don't understand. A lot of our teachers don't even understand the depths of it because you have to go in and look to understand the depths of what's going on. No other district, or very few other districts, are having to deal with what we're having to deal with. And so, many people relate that to what they have experienced in other districts in their state where they grew up. They don't understand the impact of 2,000 new students a year. That's additional students. And it's one of the things that we may not be communicating as clearly. I know that you all are out there. I know that you all are doing a lot, but it has to be clear communication, and there are so many different ways people are communicated with now, that it's a very difficult situation to get that clearly across the county. And when it's taxes, it always cuts close to home. But I still want you to know that your teachers support you and that there are things that I know that you are doing at the superintendent level, et cetera, to address those concerns that they have with school choice. And I just ask that we get those things out a little clearer, a little sooner, so that everybody can understand them, as those of us that keep up with it are listening and are constantly trying to make sure that you all and that all of us are doing the very best for our children, the very best for our community, because it is our schools that define what's going to happen in our community, the economic levels. We've got to have the best here so that we can have the best economy, so that we can attract people, so that we can have the housing, so that we can have all the other things that we want. And those are the things that we need to continue to get out to people and speak to them about. And while we want to attract good teachers, we have to have the buildings in order to house our students. Otherwise, we are going to be throwing a teacher in with 40 students in the same classroom, and that does not attract good teachers to our system. Thank you.
Charles Daley?
Board Chairman, Board Chairwoman, rather, Superintendent, and members of the board. One time, I was sitting in the office of the superintendent, and he said to me, "This is not personal. This is business." So, I repeat that to you tonight, sir. I remind you, members of the board, it was almost a year ago that I stood before you, and I said to you that you didn't need to build this school in Benita. You can't say that you can't remember because all you need to do is pull the tape up. And I said to you that if you pursued this, in this, in this area, that it could cost you, Madam Chairwoman, that it could cost you in the sum of close to $65 million or more. It's on the record, and that is a fact. So, you can't say that you don't remember because I said it to you. As the former chairperson of EDAC, you just didn't believe me. But now, we are faced with that issue. I remember a lesson that I learned from Dr. James Adams years ago, that the first lesson that you learn with a major, major, major multimillion-dollar project is that, Superintendent, the first question that you ask on a biweekly basis when they walked into the room, Mr. Toyber, is, "Where are we with the budget? Where are we with the budget?" After your meeting with them on a biweekly basis, if we had done this, Superintendent, we wouldn't be in this position. And we would not be in this position because you would have known. That individual would not have been able to say, "Well, I told him," but he didn't get the message because you would have known. We didn't ask the right questions. Jim Rata would have been able to say, "Hey, boys, where are we? Let me know where we are with this budget." I heard a board member say today, "And for the first time, you said the truth. We screwed up." And I appreciated you saying that. We screwed up. But the only person we held accountable was the one person. We didn't hold the person who was in charge accountable. I read every single one of your evaluations. Not one time, not one time, did we focus on the person who was accountable. We have hired a person, a firm, over $400,000 to look at the budget issues.
Thank you. Mr. Daley, your time's up, sir. Lori Fahy?
Board, I was so pleased this afternoon at 2:00, when I came and saw that you were all in here being videotaped, and I really thought that you were working on transparency. I was a little more disappointed when we moved the meeting to the training room then. I did record it, though. I know it's more comfortable for all of you there to have conversations, but, excuse me, but it's much better for the community to be able to see the recordings. And so, I did record that for you. I don't do as well as our media specialists. I apologize for that. On the student assignment, I think we need to be straight up and let people know that that's what it is. It's not really school choice. It might be somewhere in between there, but it's clearly stated in our policy that it's student assignment. In our marketing materials, it's listed as choice. Listening to your discussion today on the Vision 2030, there was no mention of student testing, and I think that's vital. Our kids are working so hard this week, and our teachers, actually, for several weeks. This is considered FSA Hell Week. That's what I just heard from one of our teachers this evening, so I wanted to make sure I mentioned that in case you guys have forgotten that in the classrooms. Finally... Oh, one of the discussions during the workshop that I heard was about calling employees, team members, and I think that's fabulous. But I have to tell you, if I heard, and when I've heard one of my girlfriends say something negative about another girlfriend, I know immediately they might do the same thing about me. And so, when I heard one of the board members today speaking poorly about a former employee or team member, I had to think that current employees might be concerned that they were being talked of the same way. So, I think it is very important how we speak with one another. I thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Kevin Daley?
Good evening, board members. Dr. Atkins and Attorney Martin. I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself officially. My name is Kevin Daley, and I'm the president-elect of the Teachers Association of Lee County. I'll be taking over July 1st when Mark retires. Looking forward to continuing the unique relationship we have and the constructive relationship we have with the district and the board. So, I also look forward to continue the meetings that Mark enjoyed with many of you on a monthly basis, so I just wanted to say hello. Thanks.
Those are all the cards, Ms. Morgan. Don Armstrong?
The record. My name's Don Armstrong, the proud parent of two 7th graders that go to one of the most hidden gems in Lee County, North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts. Boy, I'm out here before I get into the other stuff. I do want to remind everybody that Thursday, we have Arts Alive. I'd like to see everybody come out there and enjoy a lot of the instruments that these kids are playing, and they do such fabulous job and work very hard, so it'd be really great to see a lot of you out there. Now, let's get down to business. And like Mr. Daley said, this is business, especially, but to me, it's personal, too, because this is my kids' education, so I take this very personal. On the agenda tonight, you have a marketing firm you're going to bid on. It is for $350,000. And there's several different things that's listed that they're there for. But my question is, is $350,000. You want to approach us with a half-cent sales tax. I own a home. I pay my taxes every year. And then you want to ask for more money? I'm a single dad. I raise both my kids by myself. Like, I do struggle a little bit here and there, single dad. But why should I pay a half-cent sales tax when you continue to take our money and throw it away on that? And that's just one year. This is a revolving contract from last year and next year. It's a little over $1 million that'll be gone, out the window, when we should be spending money on our teachers. I have teachers complaining because they have to spend money out of their own pockets. If we want to start saving money, there's a young lady who was up here talking about long bus rides. Some of you remember that story. Long bus rides? Let's get rid of school choice and do a hybrid system, and I got a great idea. We don't need that half-cent sales tax. What we need is fiscal responsibility. Instead of borrowing money, let's budget. I teach my kids how to budget. Do I need to bring them in here? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone who came to speak to the board tonight. I do want to mention that under, oh, is there somebody else who? I'm sorry? No, we're done. Thank you. The tax, I would like to point out, the proposed tax exempts food, medicine, gasoline, and is capped at $5,000 per purchase. Proximity zones and school choice is something that this board has struggled with and this administration has struggled with for some time. I can say that I believe that the administration is working very hard to come up with a plan that will be better for students and better for the budget. But these things take time, and I don't foresee any change in the coming school year, but I can assure you, we take it seriously. We hear from the community. We can't go back, or we never had neighborhood schools, and we, we don't have neighborhood schools, but we recognize that proximity needs to be addressed, and I just want to make sure the public's aware of that. With respect to Ms. Graham, have you spoken with Leila Mufdi? Okay, so, we have your card, and we will have someone contact you and talk to you about the process.
I think she did just talk to Dr. Creel, so...
Oh, okay. Okay, good. All right, thank you. Also, I think Ms. Hall mentioned that she would like to see us do better communication between levels. In... In fact, that is on Dr. Creel's list of objectives going forward. School safety is in our forefront. We talked about it today. We talked about the budget impact. Our director is working hard to put together a plan. Our schools have been assessed, and now it's a matter of how quickly we can move and how much things will cost. Thank you, Charla, for continuing to come up where she... To speak on beha... There you are. To speak on behalf of the tax. I appreciate your commitment and your engagement with the community. Mr. Daley, looking forward to working with you. There you are. Okay.
We won't know that for a little bit.
Yeah. We'll find out in November. Okay. And those are my comments for this evening. Thank you, and we're going to move on. Okay, next is the approval of action items in the agenda under consent. I would like the public to be aware that the documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days before the board meeting. We are expected to review all the material, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding communications or recommendations. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion? Ms. Fisher.
I have none this evening.
Mrs. Giavennelli.
I have none.
Mrs. Patrica.
No, thank you.
Mr. Toibert.
I have none.
Mrs. LaRiviere.
No, ma'am.
And I have none. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Fisher, seconded by Mrs. LaRiviere. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries six zero. Included in the approval of consent items on the agenda are resolutions proclaiming May 2018 as National Military Appreciation Month, May 9 as National School Nurse Day, and May 6 through 12 as National Teacher Appreciation Week, and May 8 today as National Teacher Day. And thank you to everyone in this district who works with teachers, who supports teachers, the teachers. Every time we meet and talk in one of our workshops, without fail, the comment is made that we have extraordinary people in this school district working incredibly hard and under, in some cases, very difficult circumstances. So we are deeply grateful to the teachers and to everybody else in the district for their work in the schools. Dr. Atkins, would you please introduce any administrators in attendance with a new assignment that were approved on the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, be happy to. We have several to announce this evening, and it gives me a great pleasure to announce every single one of them. You know, this, you have an opportunity to follow folks' career, and it's really good when you see, and very gratifying when you see them move up in the organization. Roger Lloyd, Assistant Director, Transportation to Director, Transportation Services. Has a tough job and is going to be continuing to work real hard for this school district. Next one, you probably know this gentleman. He has certainly distinguished himself at Cape Coral High School as a teacher and a teacher on assignment, but Michael Cook is now Cypress Lake Middle School Assistant Finally, Jared Eady. Jared Eady also distinguished himself in a number of positions in this school district, and he is our recommendation for Director, Diversity and Inclusion. So looking forward to it. Just a couple other items of note that are of real importance in terms of a, really an era in Talc is coming to a close soon, but Mark Costellano on our agenda this evening is his retirement. And, you know, Mark and I have had an opportunity to work for many, many years together. But replacing him, Mr. Kevin Daley, who you saw come up earlier. Kevin also has been on the bargaining team. We've had a wonderful opportunity to work as well, and I'm sure that will be an absolute smooth transition, and we will continue to have that great working relationship. Looking forward to working with all of these folks moving forward.
Next are superintendent's recommendations. The first recommendation is Good Cause. Dr. Atkins, would you please read your recommendation?
Yes, in defense of Jen Schaefer, who did have it here, I'm just going to say that. I'm looking at the wrong thing when, so I don't want to... When I said earlier it wasn't here, it is here. I recommend board approval to piggyback forward to the Department of Education bid for the purchase of 10 school buses awarded to multiple vendors for the period of May 8 through December 31, 2018, for the one-time expenditure of $982,240, with an option to cancel if deemed to be in the best interest of the district. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. LaRiviere, seconded by Mrs. Fisher. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries six zero.
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval to extend by 180 days the ITN for floor covering awarded to Acousti Engineering, Florida, and Wayne Wiles Floor Covering for the period of May 18, 2018, through November 13, 2018, at an estimated expenditure of $2 million pursuant to the same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Toibert. Seconded by Mrs. Fisher. Any discussion? Mr. Toibert.
I'd just like to say that I, you know, I appreciate the emphasis now that we're moving a lot of our bids to local entities, that we're giving deference to our local community, and that's a good thing, and it keeps Lee County thriving. So I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries six zero. Now we move to attorney recommendations. Mr. Martin.
Yes, Ms. Morgan. Board members, the first recommendation this evening is to explain to you that on the 1st of May, the Lee County School Board received a referral from the Florida Department of Education, Office of the Inspector General of a complaint alleging public misrepresentation of the true cost of construction of Benita Springs High School. The OIG requests the school board investigate the allegations and provide a response within 30 days. So this evening, I'm requesting that the school board provide direction on how it wishes to respond to this subject request from the IG.
You've heard the attorney's recommendation. Does anyone have a motion they'd like to make? Patrica.
I move the school board direct Attorney Martin to prepare a response to the IG for the board chair's signature stating that the superintendent directed staff to search for the Reginald Snell memo referenced in the IG report, and that no such memo was found, and further stating that the Lee County School Board has made a determination based on past experience that allegations of impropriety or misconduct submitted by Alberto Rodriguez are completely devoid of credibility and only submitted for the purpose of harassment and disruption, and therefore, the school board will not expend taxpayer dollars or any district resources to investigate allegations made by Alberto Rodriguez, urging the IG to make the same determination, indicating the school district will cooperate if the IG chooses to investigate this matter.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Toibert. Discussion. Mrs. Giavennelli.
I have thought about this, and I've decided that I'm not going to support this tonight because I feel that it's... I have to think about what other people said today about other employees, and I'm not going to... I don't want to lash out and have fear for other employees if they can't come forward in... I know you feel like that he's a disgruntled employee, and I understand that, but I want our other employees to feel comfortable that they can come forward in presenting any issues that they may have had, past or present, in our district. So I feel that I will not support this tonight. I would have supported, going back to OIG, I want to commend that it... Because you go back to the OIG, and they can decide on their investigation. I would have supported that, but I can't support something lashing out about another employee, an ex-employee. That's just how I feel. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I think that the facts support this... Mr. Rodriguez's obsession with our district. We're not talking about a former employee who was let go, who has approached us to ask why. We're talking about a man who was let go in 2013, who has made six OIG complaints against this district, all of which are unsubstantiated. Every single one is unsubstantiated. We, as a board, pride ourselves on relying on data and making our decisions. Was it 221 emails have been sent our way? This is harassment, and I'm standing on the side of our employees and supporting our employees in making this motion tonight and letting our employees know that you are entitled to a harassment-free work environment so that you can work to educate our students. So I hope you'll feel comfortable knowing that this board supports you and supports the superintendent in the transparency that you have brought to this position. And I'm just, as I said earlier today, I'm disgusted that we're even having this conversation.
I realize that, and I understand that, but I think it becomes...
I'm done.
Okay.
I also want present and former employees to know that we are most certainly open to hearing any complaints that you may have. If an investigation is necessary, it deserves our immediate attention and our immediate action. But what we're talking about here with Rodriguez is an obsessed, disgruntled former employee, and the data proves that he continues to fabricate information, wasting tens of thousands of dollars in staff time. Thank you. I'm done.
Mrs. Giavennelli.
Yes. I understand what you're saying, but there is some facts in his allegations, and so therefore, for public trust and for our, for the appearance that we're not fulfilling the request of the IG, I think that's an issue. And so if you want it, I feel like it should be on the district, but if you want to give it back to the IG, then okay. But I think it's about public trust, and the community does not have that.
That is specifically what the motion says. The end of the motion, I will quote, indicating the school district...
I did not call on you, Mrs. Patrica.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I didn't call on you.
Oh, sorry.
She was still speaking, and Mr. Toibert was waiting to speak.
We've had stigma with Benita, and yes, we've owned the mistake, but when you've got a four... It's not just Mr. Rodriguez that's complaining. It was Mr. Snell's other email. I read everything. So it leaves doubt in the community. When somebody gets those records, it's going to affect us. It already has. So why not do the right thing? I'm here about doing the right thing.
Mr. Toibert.
Thank you. The right thing is to not spend a lot of taxpayer dollars when last year, 25% of the public records request for the entire school district was by one man. The amount of cost that the taxpayers endure because he continues to ask for requests for anything and everything he can possibly stir up based upon articles in the news press or any other employees that they... He can solicit to give any threat, to do, to find anything against the district, and anything that has merit, we've investigated. You'll see in the next IG report, when there was an issue brought forward, the superintendent promptly acted, put an auditor in place, did the investigation, did a report. But that's not good enough. So at some point, we need to get back to what we do for this community, which is educate children. We need to create an environment for our staff and our employees that is conducive to what they do, and we need to support them. And to have continual harassment from a group of people that are trying to do nothing more but upset our ability to, A, move forward with a sales tax, and B, move forward with the education of our children, at some point, this board has to stand up and protect our district, and I believe that's what we're doing, and I fully support that. And for anybody to make other accusations not based in fact, and none of the allegations have a basis of fact, is purely for political reasons and is, and it should be very vetted out to understand what's going on and find out exactly why people are doing what they're doing for the sake of doing it. So I believe Dr. Rodriguez is doing things for reasons of malfeasance, and I don't support it, and so I fully support this motion.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes, thank you. You know, we did have this conversation individually with our board attorney, and we had the conversation this afternoon at our workshop. And for the benefit of the listening audience, I would like to ask Mr. Martin to weigh in one more time to just give us the actual request of the IG, the Inspector General of the DOE, and to give us the options that were provided as choices for us so that everybody is clear on what we're doing and we can leave the personalities out of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin, please.
Give me just a second, if I may, to find the IG report. As I shared initially, the IG's request is that the school board investigate and respond to the IG within 30 days, providing a report of the results of its investigation. The IG request is with reference to the presentation at the March 7, 2017, school board meeting with respect to the cost of the Benita Springs High School construction project. The assertion that was made by Mr. Snell is that there was a memo that he provided to those in his chain of command concerning the cost with respect to that project that included, the estimate of which was based on two assumptions, and he asserts in that memo that the assumptions were not included in the presentation. The IG's request is that that very narrow issue, just whether there was misrepresentation with respect to the cost of that construction project at the cited school board meeting occurred. In the context of that request, I presented to the school board and individual school board members in my conversation three different options on how to respond to this request from the Inspector General. The first was to direct the board's attorneys to coordinate an investigation of the allegations in the report by outside counsel with an authorized cost not to exceed $6,000. The second was to direct the superintendent to, excuse me, temporarily assign an investigator from the Professional Standards Department to assist the board attorney in investigation of the allegations in the report, and for the board attorney to prepare a report of such investigation for submission to the IG. And the third option was to direct the school board attorney to prepare a response to the IG for the board's signature stating the Lee County School Board has made a determination based on past experience that allegations of impropriety or misconduct submitted by Dr. Alberto Rodriguez are completely devoid of credibility and only submitted for the purpose of harassment and disruption, and therefore, the school board will not expend taxpayer dollars or any district resources to investigate allegations made by Dr. Rodriguez, urging the IG to make the same determination, indicating the school district will cooperate if the IG chooses to investigate this matter.
Thank you. And then, this afternoon at the workshop, I think that we came to consensus regarding how we would respond to that, and there was information that there had been an investigation and that there was additional effort to locate the memo, which was not found by any of our technology people. So I thought we came to consensus in what the motion would be tonight to address this one issue.
Mrs. Giavennelli.
Yes, we did. However, I think that this has been made, this is about Alberto Rodriguez. You're giving him traction. Why not take the IG's investigative... They're asking for us to investigate. Why not take their hint and do that and put this to bed?
Mrs. LaRiviere. Mrs. LaRiviere.
I spent a lot of time thinking about all sides of the matter, and in the past, when we have had outside counsel do investigations for us, there have been times that we have found that members of the community, some members, have speculated that it was not a...the person did not judge appropriately. They were...had a leaning toward the district in our favor anyway, and so on, who did not see it as a fair investigation. So for that reason, I believe one way to make all members of the community feel assured and confident that a fair and unbiased investigation has taken place would be for that to take place with the...within the office of the Inspector General. So I will be...I am in favor of turning that over to their office. We spend an awful lot of time and an awful lot of money, and we can all make assertions of whether or not we believe that money is fairly spent and wisely spent. Everyone will have their own different opinion on those things in the public. However, I believe this is one way that we need to just let somebody else take it where we are not selecting the counsel, where we are not hiring someone to do the investigation. Let it be done, and then people will perceive it as a fair and accurate investigation. So that's my...where I am.
Mrs. Giavennelli.
And I agree with you on that. So my point is, let's not make it about Mr. Rodriguez. Let's make it...let's leave that out of it. That's what the problem I have, is making it about an employee regardless of what...I understand what Chris has said. I'm not disputing any of that. My point is, we want to take the recommendation of the IG. That's what I...and I just want to make that clear, that...
Martin.
Yes. Board members, after the workshop meeting this afternoon, I was contacted by Dr. Cuckel. She asked me to share the discussion the board had on this issue at the workshop meeting. After doing so, she asked me to express at this meeting her support for the motion that Ms. Patrica intended to make.
Can I call the question?
Yes.
If you call the question, it goes to vote.
Motion to call the question requires a two-thirds vote, if you wish to do that.
Okay. I make a motion to call the question.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So you've heard...
Ms. Patrica's recommendation.
Yeah, Ms. Patrica's recommendation. Do we need to read it again, or are we...
Please.
Comfortable proceeding. Let's read it again?
Yes, please.
I move the school board direct attorney Martin to prepare a response to the IG for the board chair's signature stating the superintendent directed staff to search for the Reginald Snell memo referenced in the IG report, and that no such memo was found, and further stating the Lee County School Board has made a determination based on past experience that allegations of impropriety or misconduct submitted by Alberto Rodriguez are completely devoid of credibility and only submitted for the purpose of harassment and disruption, and therefore, the school board will not expend taxpayer dollars or any district resources to investigate allegations made by Rodriguez, urging the IG to make the same determination, indicating the school district will cooperate if the IG chooses to investigate this matter.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. Is there...oh, we voted, and we've had discussions. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Call one.
Second recommendation. On May 4th, the Lee County School Board received a referral from the Florida Department of Education Office of the Inspector General of a complaint alleging improper provision of services to Mount Herman Church by district staff. The OIG request is the school board investigate the allegations and provide a response within 30 days. Therefore, this evening, I'm requesting that the school board provide direction on how it wishes to respond to the subject request from the IG.
You've heard the attorney's...Mr. Toiber?
Madam Chair, I move the school board direct the board attorney to prepare a response to the IG to the board chair...for the board chair's signature indicating the subject matter of the complaint has already been investigated with a finding of no improprieties and attaching the report of the investigation by the Lee County School District, and stating that the Lee County School Board has made a determination based upon past experience that the allegations of impropriety or misconduct submitted to by Dr. Alberto Rodriguez are completely devoid of credibility and only submitted for the purpose of harassment and disruption, and therefore, the school board will not expend taxpayer dollars or any district resources to investigate allegations made by Dr. Alberto Rodriguez, urging the IG to make the same determination, indicating the school district will cooperate if the IG chooses to investigate this matter.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Toiber.
Again, the same language you've heard before. This one was actually reported, had to do with a...an incident after the storm. It was reported to the superintendent. He immediately assigned an investigator to investigate, did a full investigation. I stand by our internal investigation and the recommendation by the superintendent of no impropriety, and I think the matter is done. To go behind them, again, builds credibility issues within our department of what we're doing and the superintendent's auspice and control of the situation, so I support that the report be submitted so the IG could see it. If they feel that we're improper, they can move forward, and we'll support them in their investigation.
Thank you. Other discussion? Mrs. Giavennelli.
I'm going to reserve my vote again. Mine is because of the IG requesting us to investigate, so I'm going to reserve my vote.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries 5-1. Other business. Board member comments, reports. Mrs. LaRiviere.
I have none.
Mr. Toiber.
I'd just say that I have to agree with Ms. Fahey, that I think at this point, our workshops, we wasted a whole lot of time going over everything. When we left the workshop, we had consensus with our group. We spoke about all the exact same issues that we bring forward again, and I think it's about time we need to have the media or the cameras and the public see the changes that we come to an agreement. And for political reasons, you know, we continue to get...go over the same things, waste time and efficiencies of the meetings, and we just need to...we just need to start conducting business efficiently. And I resent the fact that all the things that Ms. Giavennelli agreed to in the workshop now all of a sudden becomes a grandstand issue at the board table. So let's do everything in the public. So if you're gonna...if you're gonna go out there and grandstand, start from the beginning and not waste everybody's time, because I just can't seem to be doing the same thing twice for no apparent reason. That's all I have.
Patrica.
Autumn, will you be my mentor in life? You're really amazing. You inspire me.
Thank you very much.
And you're a really good example of why we sometimes sit at this table and go hard at each other. I want you to understand that sometimes we have to go hard at each other in order to come to the best decision for all 94,000 students in this district.
I think that it was a very interesting discussion.
Good. I'm glad you enjoyed it. And I've really enjoyed having you here.
Thank you.
Mrs. Giavennelli.
I wasn't grandstanding. I have a right to change my mind, Mr. Toiber, and I think that don't throw stones. You need to live up to where you...what county you live in and support that county, and don't throw a stone back at me. And Ms. Patrica, and I'll grandstand if this is what...so be it, if this is what you want to call it, but you're disrespectful today to me, and you do it constantly, and I'm over it. So I can change my vote anytime I like. Last I knew, neither none of you employed me. I am entrusted by the people. They voted for me, and that's where I'm going. I'll take it to the grave.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes, I would like to say that we all are elected constitutional officers, and that I think that we need to, at the table, in the public, be respectful of one another's positions, and if there is a difference in opinion, that's okay. And on a better note, I would like to thank Janelle Lau and Jackie Corey for the wonderful entertainment we had at the beginning of the meeting. I want to thank our teachers, who are being appreciated this week, for the hard work that they do every day to help people like our student representative, Autumn, be successful as she is. And I want to welcome her again and thank her for her service on the student advisory committee because she's been incredible. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. And Autumn Rhodes.
I actually have a...this is like very off-topic, but I have a...I unfortunately will not be attending the last student advisory committee meeting for this season, so I would like to address something just here very quickly. So at my school, we...okay, so I have a dietary restriction, and I cannot have anything with milk or cheese in it because it can cause me pain. So at my school, most every...just about everything in the school lunch line is...has...contains milk or some sort of dairy. And something that I'd like to implement in my school or in schools in our area, or just work on implementing, is maybe a salad bar or something that doesn't include dairy, because obviously, there are many kids with allergies, not just dietary restrictions. And I know that there are some schools that do have a salad bar, and we do have little salads that are prepackaged, but they have cheese on them. And the cheese is scattered and mixed throughout the salad where you can't really get it out effectively. So I would just like to work on, like, creating some sort of option for children with dietary restrictions.
Mrs. Patrica.
I'm stunned that you're not perfect. I'm really...I don't mean to make light of your dietary condition or restriction, but I'm stunned that you're not perfect.
Thank you.
Still pretty perfect.
Yeah, pretty close.
No, I think it's wrapped up.
That's it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, thank you. It really has been a pleasure to have you at the table tonight.
Thank you very much.
We got off to a great start with Lee High Senior and introducing you, so what a pleasure. I have no comments this evening. Mr. Martin.
One item that I need to share because I fail to share it at the appropriate, the relevant time. I had the same conversation with Dr. Cuckel concerning the second IG matter, and again, she expressed...wished me to express support for the motion that Mr. Toiber intended to make.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Dr. Atkins.
Just a couple of comments. First of all, I do appreciate the board's careful consideration of any of these items. You know, it's something where transparency is something that every single person sitting up here, I think, strives for. That was the whole reason for that particular briefing. So again, I do appreciate the fact that people take the time to delve into the issue prior to just making a decision. The easy thing would be just to simply go with a recommendation or what have you. Instead, you know, I think this board continues to delve into and ask for the details and to challenge me as a superintendent, which I with tough questions, and I sincerely appreciate that. I think that makes all of us better. On a couple items that were mentioned in public comment, transportation, just want to mention this year alone for viewing public, we have redone our routes, and we have saved this district approximately $1.7 million in transportation costs. So that is something that we are always carefully taking a look at, and that does come up quite often in...when we talk about student assignment, when we talk about transportation. But, you know, I was recalling conversations from years ago. We are actually much, much more efficient than we were a decade ago in terms of the number of routes and the ridership on those routes, you know. And so I think Mr. Cody and his staff, which Mr. Lloyd, you've got a tough person to follow, but I'm sure and confident you will do quite well. So anyway, student proximity is another place that, as we move toward this, is going to save us additional dollars. Mr. Cody is hoping to, at some point, come up to a savings of about $12 million. Now, that's going...that's out there ways. That's not going to be something we're going to realize this year or next year. But as we get better with proximity, which they've taken a number of really giant steps toward proximity, which I'm very happy to see using technology and mapping and working with our collaborative partners, I think that as we move forward, we are going to see significant savings as it relates to transportation, which then we can turn right around and put that back into the classroom. So I'm excited about the prospects. Now, having said that, that's still, if you save all that money in transportation, you're still going to be woefully short of coming up with what you need for the capital needs of this district. But however, we are doing everything we can in terms of raising revenue and doing cost savings so that we can then put that...those dollars back in the classroom or back into the construction and maintenance budgets. So thank you, and that's all my comments for this evening.
Thank you. The next scheduled meetings of the board on Friday, May 11th, there's a school board workshop at 9:00 a.m. On Tuesday, May 22nd, there is a school board briefing at 2:00 p.m., as well as a school board action meeting at 6:00 p.m. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. LaRiviere, seconded by Mr. Toiber. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0.